Call the workshop to order. Julie, has anyone signed up for open forum?
No one has signed up.
Since no one's signed up, the next item on the agenda. The Teaching and Learning Curriculum Indicator Report. Looks like Jill and Carol are here. You're up.
And there we go. Obviously, the work that we do connects to every single district strategic direction, which I think is a great thing. We get to see those in all of the areas of teaching and learning. We have a very skeleton crew. I oversee K five curriculum. Mr. DeBay is six twelve. We have Carol Cott as our district literacy lead and our curriculum integration specialist. And then this summer, we have Zach Erickson onboard with our MTSS coordinator in Gate. And then we have Christina Landris, who is administrative assistant. The Teaching and Learning Department, obviously, it impacts all of the students in our district. So that would be about 3,860. We did break it out by site, just so you could see where the students, where they all fall, quite a range, but we do impact all of the students within. So to talk about teaching and learning, a big thing, a celebration for this past year especially, is we have seen a huge increase in collaboration across the district. That's always what we strive for. Obviously, that's a positive change with curriculum and instruction. We have teachers and ESPs working closely with administrators more than they ever have before, which I think is great. We have our curriculum adoption process. We've always had one. We have revised it and it's very clear. It's very, it's simple. There's clear direction for each year, each phase of it. And more exciting is going to be K twelve. So for example, if we're adopting, we're looking into math, it's going to be for everybody. Before it was piecemeal, that'd be like middle school, then elementary, maybe high school. Now it's everybody. So again, that's helping to increase that collaboration across the district. Administrator capacity, I mentioned that has increased. We have had a lot of training, especially with Carol, with wit and wisdom. We've had the opportunity to have training with Great Minds, the company, directly. We've had coaches come, just lots of hands-on training in classrooms, walkthrough training, which has been great. The administrators are working on greater accountability for implementation. So our wit and wisdom at the K eight level was probably one of the most positive implementations I've ever seen in my time here as a principal. The accountability piece was there for principals to be doing classroom walkthroughs and working together and working with Carol in collaboration to ensure that students are receiving that instruction. And then also, as the walkthroughs I mentioned, but the reflective practices, we do meet with Matt often, once a month, and then with Anna too, as our principal training. And I think those conversations with Matt and with Anna too, has really helped the principals, I mean, myself, reflect on the practices of teaching and learning in our schools. And then partnerships, this is really exciting. We've been working with the Northeast Service Co-op. They provide a lot of free help in the areas of science, math, and reading for us, which is great. MDE, Carol has got us partnered up with some great resources from the Department of Education, which has been helpful. And then actually, a lot of districts across the state, we've made connections with people who are in different phases of implementation of wit and wisdom, which has been helpful to see where we're headed. People have come to observe at the middle school to see us in our first year already doing wit and wisdom, which has been great. We're hoping to expand that as we move into math.
Can you hear me? So what I want to do is I want to go back quickly to that partnership. One thing that we failed to add to that, Jill, last week was we have a recent partnership with the University of Minnesota Libraries, because we are still responsible for media literacy, even though we don't have any librarians in the district. And so we have a training for our secondary educators on October 23rd of how they can use those free resources. We're really, I'm really trying to get out there to get all the things that we can get on our limited budget, so I'm excited about that. So evidence of success or improvement, our consistent, high-quality ELA instruction for reading and writing implemented in grades K eight. So that's the first time that that's happened in this district, where we've had that uniform, consistent, high-quality instruction. Effective teacher training and ongoing support. We're supporting the teachers and what they're doing. Increased collaboration, as Jill said, with other districts and state agencies, including MDE. Stronger understanding and application of evidence-based practices, which by the way, is required by the state of Minnesota across classrooms and grade levels. Notable growth in student writing, particularly this year one of K eight implementation. And improved reading proficiency scores, as evidenced by the STAR test. MCA scores will be coming soon, but you can see third, fourth, and fifth grade. So third grade, sixty-one point three percent proficient in the spring. Fourth grade, sixty-one point four, and fifth grade, sixty-three point four. So we're really making some gains. Barriers to success or improvement for our department? Number one would be limited budget resources impacting our staffing, materials, and professional development opportunities. Administrator shortages placing added strain on the leadership capacity and instructional oversight. And when I say that, I mean, we have an assistant principal split between east and west, and we have walkthroughs to do, and is trying to figure out how to manage it. But we do, a lot of people wearing lots of hats. Staff members serving multiple roles, leading to stretched responsibilities and reduced focus. Lack of time for everybody, planning collaboration due to competing priorities. High instructional demands with extensive content to teach and manage. It's a lot. And I will say, we're through the reading training for most K five teachers. Our new teachers will still have to do that this year, the carry-all training. So they have a little bit less of a load, less new things this year. The ongoing substitute teacher shortage affecting consistency and access to professional learning. One thing I'm excited about with that is that we do have a training next week for our guest teachers. And one thing that was asked was, I'm a guest teacher, I don't know how to do this language arts curriculum, and it kind of scares me. And so thanks to the HR department, we have a little section at the end to do a short training for them, so that they'll feel more comfortable with it. And then frequent changes in state policies and requirements, creating uncertainty and adjustment challenges. One of those currently is that we will have to give an assessment to grades four through twelve, any students who are falling below the 50th percentile. And as of last spring, that was roughly a thousand students. And the plane is still being built, but it is in the air. And so if you've worked with MDE or the legislature with anything, that's kind of how things happen, and that's where we're at right now. But I'm very proud of our department. We presented our plan to the strategy team this morning, and it was pretty solid. Changes and recommendations for the upcoming year? We are transitioning from Orton Gillingham, you might have heard it, OG, in K two, to Ufly Foundations in grades K three. It was driven by a plateau in our K two student data. So we're being responsive to the data and making a change. It also offers a more cost-effective, research-based solution. I was sharing with Mr. Gross this morning that I read a research study yesterday on the effectiveness of Ufly. And I don't know how much of you know about research and education, but the effect size for change for Ufly is anywhere from one point two to a two point two, I think, which is a huge effect size. We are expanding coaching and professional development to ensure strong implementation and instructional support. All of our K eight teachers are going to go through writing training either tomorrow or at the end of the month. And that's something that we haven't done. And I'm thirty years in education, and it hasn't happened in many places. We are ensuring adequate staffing to build and maintain capacity, including a full-time literacy lead and curriculum implementation specialist, that's me, to guide and support district-wide literacy efforts and in our curriculum implementation. Jill talked about math. We are starting the process for math, K twelve, and it will follow the same blueprint of the things that we've done, how we've done them, et cetera. We are preparing for and responding to changes in the Minnesota math standards. There's been a huge shift in math standards, and we want to ensure alignment across grade levels and curriculum. With that, we are getting help from the Service Co-op and from MDE. And then this I mentioned earlier, we are implementing the four plus, so grades four through twelve dyslexia screener using CAPD read basics. That is the required test chosen by MDE to support early identification and intervention in grades four, twelve. Speaking of those interventions, again, the plane's not built yet. As of November first, the state will give us a list of interventions that we're required to use for those students who might fall below those levels. So again, we're constantly monitoring this. It's constantly changing. That's it. Yeah, Ashley.
So I have a question about the implementation for the dyslexia screener.
Yeah.
You had mentioned that that will be used for students that fall below that 50%.
Yep.
Is there ever a time where that would be implemented for students that are right around that range? Or maybe you're, that teacher or staff member is noticing that there's a struggle somewhere, and that those, there's just like a very particular, that student might need that screener just in case.
So, and you can hold me too, if you want to. Do you want to go? You want to?
So you're talking elementary, probably, students?
Well, I mean, any, to be honest. Like, they might struggle because they don't know that they have dyslexia of any sort from fourth through twelfth, but they're not falling behind in that 50th percentile.
Yes, as far as elementary, those kids that reach that middle you're talking about, they would have some sort of intervention, most likely. They would have AmeriCor, they'd have some sort of tier two, or with the interventionists, and they may not need the CAPD, but they would do other, the other more diagnostic assessments past our screener to help them. As far as six twelve, I can't speak to, I don't think they have as, the interventions aren't there as strong as the elementary, but.
That makes sense.
But a teacher could. But a teacher could use that CAPD test, though, Ashley. If you, if, for example, if I were in the classroom and I saw a student who might be struggling in some things, we purchased seats. So as long as we had seats, I could say, okay, I'm going to test this student, even though they didn't fall below the other.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Also, the screener is three times a year for that very reason. So they may, right, be okay in the fall, and then winter comes. If they're kind of struggling, then winter, they may fall below. So we do have those safety nets. That's why we screen. And then we also have progress monitoring. So weekly, and then.
Yeah.
Okay.
One thing I want to add to that is that screening is really important. And that's one thing that's important for our teachers to talk to our students about, but it's also important for us to talk to parents and community. The screening is important. That's how we help students. And so we need students and families to take those seriously, and we're going to work on communications with that. We also talked today, communication will go home three times a year in grades K through twelve. Families can expect to see that. We worked out a process for that, and that hasn't really happened in the secondary, so we're tightening that up as well.
Thank you.
Carol, I had a quick question. You talked about the spring STAR scores that you were making progress, sixty-one. Can you talk what it was last year and what that delta was?
Actually, we should put that on there.
We can, I'm not sure, I can, we can find it, what it was, but it's gone up.
Yeah. Okay.
For sure. And there's been growth from fall, the fall, we like to, we like to look from fall to spring, because it's the same group of kids.
Sure.
And then it's within a year, and we know what instruction they had, what, you know, factors helped create that data. And there was at least a five percent increase from fall, which is great. I know that's, that seems low. We would like higher. In an ideal world, eighty percent proficient, seventies would be great, and we do have that in some pockets in math. But this is an increase, usually it's around the fifties.
Okay.
So this is definitely moving in the right direction. It's just going to be small steps until we get, till we get there in a few years. Yeah.
Dave, I do want to say too, that the preliminary MCA scores, I can't talk about anything official, but the preliminary from spring, as I was monitoring it, we were up, if you're looking at third grade through 10th grade, we were up in five of those grade levels in the preliminary data. So, and that changes a little bit before the official comes out.
Do we know when that's coming out?
We just got the thing, officially, the 29th. The 29th, it'll be public.
Thank you. I'm very impressed. This is a very powerful and interesting and engaging presentation. Language, OG is Orton Gillingham. Ufly is?
University of Florida Literacy Initiative. So it was created, and if any of you are interested in that research study that I read, I'm happy to share it with you, so you can get some reading on it. It was created at the University of Florida. And it is, I've never taught kindergarten through third grade, but from a teacher lens, I think it's more user-friendly. Teachers have done training. It also, the resources are all, other than the manual, the resources are all free. So we can get them from the website. Again, it's going back to that stewardship of, stewardship, et cetera, and doing that right. So, and then the other part of Ufly is it does correlate with our wit and wisdom curriculum. And so Ufly is for foundational skills, K two, three. Wit and wisdom is the core. And then we have a bridge coming in between the two for reading, which teachers will get a training on that in the spring. So we kind of have a plan to bring everything together.
One thing to note about Ufly too, in an ideal world, we would like it just in K one, two. However, our data doesn't show that our third grade students are ready. They need that phonetic review. So our third grade teachers will be teaching the second grade scope and sequence. But we are going to talk to the teachers about, maybe there'll be some differentiation in there, because we will have a number of third graders that don't need that. And like, where do we, where's that line? So we're hoping that it is a short-lived. Yes, yes. So that will be our goal, too. So be, be on, stay tuned to hear about how, how we do with that.
Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you. I do have to comment that, you know, I've asked a number of teachers kind of how the implementation of wit and wisdom's been and feedback. I've always gotten positive feedback. So, you know, I, the people I've talked to, it's been universally positive there. I really have to say that. So I am impressed with that, because I haven't really even seen anyone say, but, I haven't heard a but yet. So that's good. I guess one of the things I ask about is, so we've implemented wit and wisdom K through eight. We didn't really talk about what's planned for ninth through twelfth in this. Is it kind of in the, is it, where's the plan for that, or how far out is that?
Yep, I'm happy to do that. So we did that implementation, K eight, and then nine, twelve is beginning the process. Nine, twelve looks a little different, right, with their different classes, et cetera. So we're beginning the process with them. The standards are different. We have, they are starting September 24th, again, with the support of the Northeast Service Co-op and MDE. And we also, I'm really excited to share that with the Service Co-op, we're doing some trainings with other high school English teachers across the area. So they'll be collaborating with teachers across the area, which is really important. You know, we're not on an island here. It's really important. So we're starting that process to dig into the standards. The standards is what drives everything. Looking at our MCA data, where are we? What do we need to do? And then go from there to be able to fill some gaps.
When you say area?
Yep.
Northern Minnesota?
So it's the, do you know what districts the Co-op?
The Co-op serves districts from Deer River to Duluth and north.
Okay, so Northeastern, basically, kind of Arrowhead.
And all of those trainings are provided free of charge. So we're not paying anything extra to have that, to have.
We love that.
Yeah, I know. I know. And Tom, I do want to go back to your comment about hearing positive things about implementation. And I do want to say that with Mr. Gross's leadership and the administrators, knowing that there was a need and getting teachers the need last fall was really important to that.
So, you know, there was discussion through the math of looking at implementing cross-board now, right? K through twelve. Obviously, now we've, we've, is there a concern about staff constraints with that? I mean, obviously, now you're taking that implementation and going over the whole thing. I mean, there's benefits to it, but now my concern is additional resources and.
And it wouldn't necessarily be the same curriculum. Okay, so it could potentially be there's a curriculum for K two, because it's, the standards are chunked. So K two, three, five, and then six, twelve. So there's continuity. The purpose of it being, though, across K twelve, and now that we're working on nine, twelve for English, we'll kind of bring them into the fold. So we have that conversation together, especially at those transition points. But with math, we have a committee together. We have a K twelve committee together. We ask teachers, we have administrators on there. And we're starting that work also in September throughout the school year and digging into. The Co-op did a great thing for us. They took all of our MCA data over the last three years and went through and highlighted where we weren't meeting, where we were meeting. So now at least we know where some of our opportunity areas are.
Final question, I will, right? Sorry. STAR for the people, acronym, and how does it differentiate from the other tests? And, you know, the 30,000-foot view, I'm not expecting detail, but.
It's something we use. I mean, you could have any test out there, there's all kinds of companies selling. We have it for reading and math, and it can be K twelve, and we have to have a screener for reading, for sure. And so it covers that, and we give it three times a year, some for our screener, and then some teachers do give it monthly to see how they're doing, their students are progressing with the standards. And the nice part about STAR is it is highly correlated to a predictor of how the kids will score on the MCA. And so there's a strong correlation. Typically, our STAR data will be real close to what our MCAs come out as. So that's what's important, and then it can really drill down on the standards for the teacher. Like Carol said, that's what, what we're teaching. And so it can really go to a high level of what the teachers need to teach and which kids need to work on what, very specifically in both subjects. And there's much more to it than that, but.
Yeah. Yeah, no, and 30,000-foot view, that's.
If we didn't have it before, the teacher, the teachers would just have to teach and hope that they did okay in the MCA. Now we actually have something that's evidence. We have percentages, we have proficiency, we can see growth. We have something to support us along the way with instruction.
And I just want to, I want to add, as the literacy coach, curriculum specialist, if, for example, one classroom was an outlier, we would know maybe that, that maybe that teacher needs support, or what's happening maybe in that classroom, so we can intervene before we get to the end of the school year. MCA scores don't come out until the end of August, and students don't get their reports until October. You're already into the next school year. It's hard to make instructional decisions on that. So that is timely and being able to use that. And part of that is teaching teachers and administrators how to use the reports and be able to be timely with that. And we're getting better. We're not perfect, but we're getting better.
If, if you don't mind following up with those stats when you do get them from last year, I would appreciate them. Just send an email's fine, just because that was my one question. And I guess the other one, and Matt, you know, and earlier in the board package, we have, in the regular minutes, we have a whole bunch of reading scores, too. Those were kind of separate from this.
Is that from the literacy plan?
Yeah. And you're going to, okay, because I do have questions. So anyways, thank you. Sorry.
Any other questions? Mark, you look like you have a question.
No, no, you guys have done a great job presenting, and sure appreciate all the hard work that you've done to implement all this. And it's a, it's a steep mountain, and we're partway up.
We are.
I would, just a little bit to your question, Tom, about STAR. There is, there is, there's ongoing dialogue in the state about the other assessments that districts do and districts pay for, in addition to what we do for the state and that the state pays for. So essentially, districts are in this place where we're paying for this assessment to give us data that we feel is useful, more useful than what we're required to do for the state. So there's an ongoing sort of dialogue about, well, why can't we just use that kind of data? Why is the state investing millions and millions into this assessment system that most districts in the state are supplementing with a separate system so that they can monitor growth from, from beginning of the year to the end of the year for the same student? Because that's the other big problem, and Carol hinted at it a little bit. That's the other big problem with the MCAs, is they tell us how last year's third graders compared to this year's third graders, and that's 200 or 300 different people. We don't know anything about where they started. We just know where they ended, and there could be 300 different stories in there. So it's a, you know, the, that big summative exam is a wholly inadequate way to really give us a picture of how much learning's happening in a year. It's just, you know, a finish line sort of measurement.
I hate to ask fifteen questions, but when we talk about all our standards, we're talking at state level. Now, how do we compare, you know, because you see a lot of studies nationally, right? And Minnesota has slipped nationally quite a bit, and it's been a highlight, right? How do our standards, you know, how are they using their statistics? Does anyone kind of have a good feel for that? Because we're really basing on state standards, right? I mean, how do the state standards compare to each other in these state tests? Or who controls that and regulates that and compares it to say that, you know, for example, Alabama's doing great, and maybe we're struggling lately? I don't know.
I can, I can speak to that just like this much.
Yeah.
If you want. So I've been around teaching a long time, way back when Common Core was just kind of being rolled out. At that time, I was teaching in Kentucky. And so Common Core was around, and Minnesota kind of followed that. Some things, there's some additions in the language arts standards specific to our state, Native American, et cetera. We have some other things that, and so that's really important to us. specific to our state, Native American, et cetera. We have some other things that, and so that's really important to us also. As far as science, I can speak to the national science standards. So Minnesota's are really close to the national standards, but of course, Minnesota couldn't just adopt the national standards. We had to tweak in certain spots. And then math, I'm not sure as far as nationally, but I can tell you that they have changed. They have been kind of flipped on their head. There's a lot more where students have to actually apply their practice, et cetera. And this is coming from a non-math person. And so they've really changed. Another thing I want you to know and keep in the back of your hat, science scores won't be out for a bit because they're working on cut scores. It was a brand new test. Okay. When I say brand new test, they could not reuse any questions from previous tests. When they remake tests, they use a bunch from past tests. None of the questions on this new test this year for science were old questions. So it's all brand new. And so we're waiting on cut scores and things like that. So those scores won't be out for a while.
Those questions, sorry, one, so speaking of that, so are the MC, you're talking about MCAs for science? Are they multiple choice? Are they short answer? What kind of questions are they?
Yep. So they're all multiple choice, as far as I know, I think. And again, as a recently, recent classroom teacher who has administered MCAs and takes it very seriously, teachers really are not supposed to be looking over the shoulder or looking to see like what types of questions. My understanding from what I've seen though, too, they're multiple choice. There's like drag and drop. There's things like that. But there are no physical, like you have to make something. We did have those years ago, but those are gone. Those are almost impossible to grade.
And because there's new questions, that's the delay?
Yes, because the state doesn't have a cut score.
They have to re-norm the test, kind of.
Yeah. That's what I was gonna say, the math.
I have a thousand questions about.
No, you're fine.
Or like, for example, if there was one question that 90% of the kids in the state got wrong, they'll throw it out. So they have to go through all, they weed through all that to make the.
And these are electronically recorded?
Yeah. Yep, that's all.
So many questions.
No, you, I mean, your, your, your questions are legit, right? So these kids take, even with our math and reading, those tests are occurring in April. And the embargoed results will come out shortly. They'll come up, the, the public results will come out at the end of August. So, you know, we're talking about four months to
Yeah.
put together digital data that really, technically speaking, the ones and zeros exist at the state immediately at the end, end of the testing window. So I mean, I don't, I'm sure there's a lot more complexity to it than I'm making, but it, but it is part of the frustration that, like Carol said, by the time those reports go out to kids, they're, they're months into the next grade.
One thing I want to, one thing I want to add is this year, we're really excited that we're adding community conversations. And it's going out through the community ed bulletin because we, we know the community has questions and they want, you know, to kind of have those things. And so we have those coming. And one of those sessions is on testing and accountability. So you all, I mean, are welcome to come, the community, if you, because really, there's a lot. And sometimes we can't answer the questions either, but we will work to find the answer. It's just, it's a lot. It's a rabbit hole.
She'll be sorry. When I to have the STAR testing and the MCA testing is highly recommended, but not required, meaning that parents can actively not have their students take those tests. Does that affect? Is that A, is that true? And then B, does that affect the percentages?
Yeah, thank you. So that's funny that you asked that because we had that conversation today. And it's a subject near and dear to my heart. So as far as the STAR, the STAR is a screening test. So we're trying to screen students for how we can best help them in the classroom. You know, that, that data is ours. You know, we're not selling it to anyone. That's ours. We're diagnosing them. When I was in the classroom, I told students, I need you to be real with just like the doctor. You don't lie to the doctor. You know, we need to do that. So that one, I would say is a, you know, we need to do that. However, MCAs, there is, there is always that opt-out option, but that counts against us. So for every student or family that chooses to opt out of the MCA test, that is an automatic, does not meet against the district. So even if your student, even if your student exceeds, if you opt them out of the test for whatever reason, and that's fine. Parents have a right to do that. It automatically counts against us.
I was just sitting in a meeting last week and the assessment director from MD was talking about their, their, the numerator is the, the group of kids who they should be able to expect to take the test. And the denominator is the ones that actually do, or vice versa, actually. Back to that question about standards quickly. The, the dynamic that we have as a set of states in, in America is unique. When you look at other countries that we often get compared to, right? So if you look at Finland or Denmark or Japan or these other countries that we're competing against when it comes to an educational, the educational outcomes, they all have a unified standard governmental curriculum with unified standard governmental standards. We have 50 independent states where those decisions are made about standards. And so to unify that group of 50 states around outcomes is very challenging. And some efforts have been made collectively, whether that's national science standards or Common Core, which was put together in theory to be this agreed upon set of standards in reading and math. States still have the independence and autonomy to adopt them or not. So Minnesota has not adopted the Common Core math and adopted, like Carol said, the language arts ones with changes. So we can't really compare apples to apples to anyone. That's why a lot of times these nationally normed assessments like ACTs or SATs will get leaned on to compare state to state because it's really the only apples to apples comparison you can make.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight. And at this point, we're going to adjourn the workshop and we'll come back into session for the regular meeting in a minute or two. Ready, Julie?
Almost. Getting a little taste of the frustration.
We'll call the workshop to order. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, or all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Moved by Ashley.
Second.
Second by David. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Closed. Agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda, approve the 2024, 25, 25, 26 local literacy plan.
I know this is in your packet, but and it's actually only the 24, 25. So if we're kind of behind the year.
Good evening again. Thanks for having me tonight. In your board packets, you have a summary because the literacy plan is 36 pages long. So I appreciate it if you took the time to read all of that, but it is pretty long. So I kind of pulled out the highlights. The other thing that I want you to know is you can see on the summary, we are required to submit annually a report to MDE about our local literacy plan and data on student performance in kindergarten, grades one, two, and three, foundational reading skills, phonemic awareness, phonics, decoding, fluency, oral language, and then students who are demonstrating characteristics of dyslexia and students in grades four through 12 who are identified as not reading at grade level. And so this local literacy plan was new a couple, I think in 2023, when the Read Act came out. And so I, I got this position in April and then I had to have this done by June 15th. And so I relied on a lot of people to help me fill in some gaps that I might not have. So Jill's going to help me if I get a, a question that I can't answer. So if, walking through here, again, this is just the highlights. We had to report lots of things in that literacy plan. Additionally, in the literacy plan this coming school year, we have to report on students in grades four through 12 who are not reading at grade level, who are below that 50th percentile with indicators of dyslexia. And Ashley, to your question, we also have to report the ones that opted out. And so it is a big deal. District literacy goals, again, this was 24, 25. So we're like back a year. Was every child reading at or above grade level every year? And that is from the state. So that is our goal, that it's every year, we're focusing on every child reading at or above grade level. So key K three goals for 25, 26. And these are from start, from the screening. In kindergarten, our goal is to go from 73 to 77. Jill talked about earlier, our goal. And before the meeting started, we were just getting giddy about the fact that we think we can easily get to 70% soon. So stay tuned. First grade, 66 to 71, second grade, 64 to 70, and third grade, 52 to 60. Some performance highlights in 24, 25, again, in the screener. Kindergarten up 3.3% from spring of 2024, so from a year. Second grade up 1.9%. We had grade configuration changes. So we had the K two building and the three, five building. If you have questions about how that's worked, we have Jill here who can speak to that. And then full implementation of wit and wisdom. And I know it must feel as a board and, and people watching at home that it's wit and wisdom, wit and wisdom. But again, this is a huge deal that we have a K eight comprehensive curriculum and we're supporting our teachers. And to Tom's point, nobody said it was horribly awful. You know, that they're being supported in that and, and our students are seeing that, which is exciting. Screening and intervention. So we have K three screening tools, dyslexia screening. So this last school year, 931 students were screened in K three and 142 of those showed characteristics of dyslexia. So 15% in that group. In grades four through 12, we use STAR to identify and we will be required to use the CAPD read basics test in 25, 26, which we do have a plan. We are purchasing seats and training will begin this fall on that. Going back to Matt's point, though, about required tests, we didn't have a choice in doing the CAPD read basics and it's costing us $7 a student. And that is right out of our literacy money. And so any money that could have gone to materials or other things is coming right out of that. So our MTSS supports, so this is, this was Jen's job. This is now Zach. And we're fortunate to have him in tier one. So this is all students. We do wit and wisdom and UFLI. And then tiers two and three. So this speaks to what Ashley was talking about earlier with interventions. We do weekly progress monitoring, small group or one-on-one interventions. On the back, parent communication is required from the state. We have to report what we're doing and how we're doing it. So families have been notified at least three times a year of screenings. We're tightening that up in secondary. Letters, phone calls, emails, conferences, and new in 25, 26 is every family K 12 will receive a letter about when those screening windows are and what's going to happen. And then every family will receive the results after each window. So families should expect to get the results at, in September, again, in December, January, and then again in the spring. And they will also get the overview of the screener. Professional development, the carryall training. Oh, and I have a typo there. Sorry. Our K five teachers and special education teachers and administrators last year went through the Read Act required training, carryall. But we have until June of 2026 to make sure everyone has finished that. So here's the fun part about that. We have five brand new teachers who did not have this training. And so we were hoping we could lump them into the next phase and we couldn't. So we have five teachers in the district, brand new teachers, who are going to take this training with the Northwest Service Co-op. And so we found a co-op that would kind of take them in because we didn't have 50 people. So we had to find somewhere for them to be. So these are the things that happen behind the scenes that required to do. And then I'm working with Casey to, to make sure that we're documenting this training since it is required by law to make sure that we have it documented somewhere who, so we can easily run a report if necessary. And that was, like I said, all K five teachers, special education teachers, administrators. And then this year, we have five new teachers doing that. Some instructional shifts, we, again, I mentioned, are switching from Orton Gillingham, OG, to UFLI. Those of you that are not familiar with education, all the acronyms, hopefully you're getting used to that after being here almost a year. But to UFLI in grades K two, they had UFLI training. It should say K three. We are going to add that in third grade. All K three teachers, special education teachers and interventionists are required to get that training done by September 9th, right, Jill? Okay. I'm really excited. In this room tomorrow, will be 50 plus teachers coming in on their own time to do writing training. So I'm really excited. When I'm leaving here, I'm going to Walmart. I have Julie's famous district mix recipe and I'm heading to Walmart so I can keep the teachers happy. But I'm really excited to be able to focus on that. And the writing has improved and just the support for teachers. And it, it speaks to our teachers in the district that we have 50 plus teachers coming in on their own time to be able to do this training. And then we, I'm really proud of the coaching and walkthroughs where we focused on the science of reading this year. And we will continue to do that. Change is hard. Change is hard and teaching is very personal. If you don't know me on a personal level, like teaching, I live, breathe, eat, sleep for this. Just talk to my husband and he'll tell you. But it's personal. And it's hard to have someone come into where you work and to feel judged. And our teachers are just amazing and they took help and support. I spent all of April last year doing classroom visits at West Elementary. I got to every single kindergarten, first and second grade classroom and met with every single teacher after. And we just talked. It wasn't evaluative. We just talked. How did that go? What would, how, what are some things that we could do differently? Down to, hey, have you thought about using a timer? Just because, you know, that part maybe went a little bit too long, maybe a timer and, oh, that sounds like a great idea. How could I do that a little bit differently? So it's just having those non-threatening conversations. And so I'm really proud of that. Funding and sustainability. We have literacy aid, which covers our curriculum, but doesn't cover it. But it helps curriculum staffing, training and materials. Required assessments, as I mentioned already, that is required by the state of Minnesota. We don't get a choice in that. And I told you before, our price for that is $7 per student. And then our focus is continuing coaching, walkthroughs, which we talked about today in our strategy meeting. Principals talked about it last week. Part of my job too, not only is to help teachers, but to help administrators. In 30 years of teaching, I've always felt, you know, my administrator is an instructional leader, but man, they're pulled 100 different ways and it may not be their area of expertise. So I take it very seriously to be able to help them on the backend with that. And then leadership and instructional development. So, and again, that's a 36-page plan that I summed up like that. There are no, I was very worried to do this report because I didn't want to mess anything up. It's tied to funding, you know, so I didn't want to mess it up for Cara. And I was told, you know, Carol, there's no Read Act police. You know, they're not, you know, there's no Read Act police. But anyway, so that's our report. And our hope this year with our community conversations and doing better at communication that we are involving more families. And we do realize that that's an area that we need to work on. Questions?
You want to start? Go ahead, Tom. Sorry. So in the detailed report.
Yeah.
It looked like there was a little slide on grade three through the year, or at least the last quarter. On, I guess, I don't know if I should reference page if it would help, but, but they had a benchmark in the spring. It looked like we had, and this was just a benchmark, right? So they're either above or below.
Correct.
Correct. And.
Yeah. And Jill, you might need to help me with this one. I'm not sure.
It's on.
Hang on, let me grab.
Yep, that's fine. It's page eight of 36. Yeah. Page 14.
What page is it on?
Page eight of, eight of your 36 pages. How's that? And I probably take this too personal because my grandson's in that grade.
No, it's okay.
So, so. But we, you know, look like in K through two, we crossboarded, did, did better through the school year. There was, well, there was ups and downs, right? There was a little slide in one of the quarters, but over the whole year we improved. Seemed like on grade three there, we, we ended up down and, and a fair amount, which was just concerning, right? And if I could understand that basically is what I'm trying to do.
So it looks like four students went down from fall to winter and then another 10 by the end of the year.
Yeah, the 10, the 10 drop there was
Yeah.
So of a concern, right? When you see that.
Yes. Third grade is our, when Carol read her data, that is our grade that we have been putting a lot of focus. There is a huge shift, there's a number of reasons, but one reason is there is a huge shift from second grade to third grade with reading as well. It's their first grade, they're tested, they no longer are just working on their foundational skills. They also have reading comprehension and they learn to read more complex texts and different kinds of texts and their text structure. I'm trying to keep it broad. And we still are teaching phonics skills in third grade. So there is work to be done K one, two, to have those foundational skills dialed in. So we're at least 80% with that, if not higher. So we, in third grade, we no longer have to work on that, only with those few kids that are maybe receiving special education services for reading or a few students who are intervention. But ideally, that should be mastered. And we're moving to third grade and that frees up their, their brain, their learning, everything, ready to work on the content that is difficult. It's the first time they see that MCA test and it's very challenging. The texts that they do read is grade levels above third grade. There's minimal questions that are actually at that third grade reading level. It's not only do we want kids to be at third grade, we actually need them higher and to learn how to, how to have strategies to tackle something like that. Yep, there is this little dip. We, we know that and that's definitely something we're working on and we've been aware of. And we have, and that's why we shifted to UFLY. And there's a number of other things going on too. And I'll talk about that in my principal report here in a minute.
Wait one second.
Yep.
I just want to add this. So this report was from like the STAR, the STAR testing, the fat, the internal screening, right? So I want to say this, and again, official data is embargoed. But last spring I did some preliminary checking on data. And I can tell you very excitedly that third grade had the highest increase of any of our grades. And so that little dip, I'm not, I'm not worried about that based on preliminary data.
Is it, sorry, Tom. I'm trying to remember if this is the assessment, I should know, but I'm losing track. The benchmark score isn't a static number, right? Like being on grade level over the year changes because what they should know in the fall is less than what they should know in the spring. So if you think about their benchmark expectation, that number is doing this over the course of the year. So if the number goes down, that didn't mean there was a regression. It just means that, that, that they were below this benchmark.
The trajectory.
Yes, yeah, is that, is that right?
That is correct. Yes, yes, absolutely.
A student could start the year above grade level, but if they don't necessarily make that progress, they're going fast, like they regressed.
Okay, so it's cumulative.
Yes.
So, so the winner testing will be the, we'll look at the trajectory. I can't even speak properly, but, but we'll look at that slope.
Yes.
And, and we'll expect it to at least maintain that slope and that'll be the new benchmark is what.
That's right, so.
The, the previous one will be the new, whatever that expected increase is will be the new benchmark for, so it doesn't necessarily mean a complete decline, just leveling, a leveling off would result in, could be a result of that.
Or just growth at a slower rate. So if you think about this.
Yeah, exactly.
The slope, like you said, if you weren't, if you saw a student report from a teacher that gives this every month, you'd see this line that would be the benchmark that we would be hoping to. And then you'd see a bunch of dots that would be around that line, right? And a kid that was at or above would be like dot above the line, dot above the line. Another kid might be kind of scattering around the line, so, yeah.
We have the software program we use for interventions. We have something called rate of improvement. It can pinpoint per student, the exact calculated amount of growth they should be growing each week and what their trajectory is for the year. It's very complex, it's very helpful and, yes.
That's it for now. I, I know there was others, but I can't remember where the other 36 pages.
That's okay. You know where to find me.
On page five of 36. I'm just, what stuck out to me when I was reading this, stood out to me when I was reading this was grade 10's scores were so significantly low compared to all the rest. I'm just curious about that grade.
Yeah.
Is there?
Well, I will say, testing doesn't always make sense. Don't send this recording to the state, but it doesn't always make sense. If we're going to test students and the last time you tested them was in eighth grade, they do no testing in ninth grade. And then they see the MCA test again in 10th grade. So that's one variable, you know, lots of variables. High school is its own, you know, is its own thing. And then we talked about standards and consistency and working and we're kind of working on that. But with that, we see that too, and looking at the preliminary scores on what we can do. The other part, as I mentioned earlier too, is buy-in, right? This test doesn't mean anything, it doesn't matter. And you'll see here, you know, this matters, it's, it's, it matters to the district, it matters to me. I'm a teacher in the district, I'm a community member here, I'm proud of our teachers in our school. And part of that is just the why, why, why we do that. And some of that's education, but it's not lost on us. In fact, when I did my preliminary look in the spring, 10th grade is an opportunity grade to be able to work with those teachers and work with those students.
And then, so back to what we're talking about in the working session. Do we have any data that shows how many kids opted out of the MCAs so we can understand?
I don't have it with me, but I can get it for you.
I'd just be curious to understand if it, if it comes against us, how much.
Right, well, and for me, and I'm biased, and I had some of your kids in class, et cetera, like I take this really, really seriously. You know, we need to, we need to know that. It's, I would tell students, that's our Super Bowl. That kind of shows all the things that you've done all year long. And so even one opting out, and it just kills you when you have a student who's exceeded all year long. And then they are not going to take the test. But again, parents have the choice to do that, you know, without any shame or blame on that. It just, I want the community and you all to understand that that counts against us in, in those scores. But I can definitely get you those numbers.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, principal's report, East Rapids Elementary.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, could we vote on that, on approving that, on the literacy plan?
Do I have a motion to approve the local literacy plan?
So moved.
Moved by Ashley, second.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion?
I, I did have a one question because, and I'm not sure if it's just the printed out version I got. There's a number of parts in it that I think it's meant to say three through 12 in grades. And it has some special characters there, is it just a typo or?
I believe it's a font issue.
Yeah, yeah, so I just wanted to.
Is that just throughout?
There's a number of spots.
Yep.
I just want to make sure that we're not sending something.
No, um, so again, this is all input into the state system. And when it was put in, it looked right. And then they create what this looks like. I didn't put it into this format, and so it's something on their end.
Okay, I just thought.
Nope, you're good.
Submitting it printed, I thought.
Okay.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The local literacy plan is approved. Sorry about that, Julie. Next item on the agenda, principal's report, East Rapids Elementary, Jill Weelock.
I'm back, okay. Well, at East, it's been a busy summer. I just first wanted to start off by thanking the Custodians. We had Summer Learning Academy at our school. So the Custodians have been hustling, would be the word. They are an amazing group and they have just, our school, just today, they were getting the floor done, it looks great. So I just wanted to, a huge, huge thank you to them for all of their hard work or would be ready for staff to come back. When I spoke earlier, I talked about a barrier and Carol did too, about time for our teachers. Elementary teachers teach a number of subjects in the day. And with the demands of increased rigor of standards, increased class sizes, student, just lots of higher need. We are going to be departmentalizing at East. And so what that means, we like to call it at East collaborative team planning. But if you are a third, fourth or fifth grade teacher, you are either going to be teaching reading this year or you're going to be teaching math. And so with that, it's beyond the word departmentalizing because I, it really is collaborative team planning. They do have an expectation every month to partner with their, collaborate and partner with their team teacher. They need to have similar routines, similar responses to behavior, similar parent communication. So it's a lot deeper than just you teach math, you teach reading now. It was, it came, an idea came up when I had, did a staff survey last spring through early out and staff said they felt like increased isolation in the bigger schools. Now that we have all the grade levels together, even though they're all together, we run two separate schedules because we have pods, because they're all in the same building. And so there was a need to do something about that. Staff are ecstatic, they're really excited about it. And I'm really looking to build content experts. So if you teach reading, you're teaching wit and wisdom, you're going to be that content expert. If you're teaching math, same thing. The, the people who are teaching those things, they're, serve on committees and they serve on a leadership capacity as well. Because we have odd sections, we only have seven, not everybody can have a partner teacher. So, and when I sent out the survey, if people were interested, there was, it all just worked out. There was someone in each grade level that said, I'll just wait, I want to teach all subjects still, we'll see how this goes. So it's, it's been working out. It'll be year one, we're still, you know, in the preliminary stages of doing it, obviously because school hasn't started. But all summer I have seen more staff at the building doing their collaborative team planning than I think probably some of them have ever been there. So it's been a real positive start. And then Carol mentioned we're in year two of wit and wisdom. And then math, we talked about that as well. We have new curriculum cycle coming, new standards, so we'll be digging into that, looking for those staff to be leaders and content experts that are teaching math. And then we have science, we're still doing, we'll have a little bit of PD this year and we'll continue with our implementation of science. And that's all new at East. It's a big thing, but that's what's been happening over the summer. Any questions?
Thank you, Jill.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, approve the minutes of the 71425 regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dave, do I have second?
Second.
Second by Ashley, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, approve the following retirements, Casey.
Good evening, board. One retirement, looking for approval for Diana Bishop, ESP retirement.
Do I have a motion?
So moved, David.
Moved by David, second.
Second.
Second by Ashley. Discussion or comments?
Thank you, Diana, for your services of ESP. We appreciate you.
Yes.
Very much.
All in favors, oh, go ahead, Dave.
Same.
Same. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Diana's retirement is approved. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda and reminder that the consent agenda is considered routine. Matters and do not require discussion. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Ashley, second.
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Consent agenda is approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the 202526 Grand Rapids Area School Handbooks. And this is a process we go through every year to approve individual building student handbooks. Do I have a motion to approve the handbooks?
Are we doing all handbooks at one moment?
We're going to do them all at once.
So moved, David.
Moved by David.
Second.
Second by Ashley.
Yes, sorry.
Discussion?
Much appreciation to the people that spent the time diligently went through these handbooks for, for the benefit of our students and staff.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The Grand Rapids Area School Handbooks are approved for the upcoming school year. Next item on the agenda. Prove the 2526 Athletic Training Services Agreement with Grand Itasca. Kara?
Good evening, this is a renewal. We contract with Grand Itasca to, they provide trainer services for all our sports. They help tape our students up, they help with emergency services at all regular season events. And they do this all free of charge. So this is a great, great benefit for our district and our students. So I'm just asking for approval of this contract.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved, David.
Moved by David, second.
Second.
Second by Dave, discussion.
One question, and I do really appreciate the fact that they offer those services for free of charge. I mean, that was a concern I've heard from another number of people is, why do we have trainers, right? Well, they're free, can't ask for that, right? We do get charged an additional cost that I saw rate for, for maybe special tournaments and things like that. Do we extend that cost out to hosting that tournament?
I don't ever remember seeing a bill from them, so I don't, if our teams take advantage of that, the bills must go strictly to the, to the booster.
To the booster club, you, you, district hasn't necessarily seen that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just hoping we would do that if, you know, if we're hosting some type of thing, have a tournament fee or something to cover those costs, but, okay.
The other discussion.
I just want to say thank you to Grand Itasca and the whole organization for this commitment to our district. It's a great relationship, great partnership, and the athletic training staff has been, I know personally with my son, he's, they've been great. So thank you to everybody here.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? The Training Services Agreement is approved. Next item on the agenda, board reports. Tom, can we start with you?
Oh boy, I didn't even think about it yet, but oh, we'll wing it, I'm good at winging it. We had, well, we had busy couple of weeks or a few weeks back. I was able to go with, with Matt when we went to Leech Lake and, and sat in on the tribal council meeting. And, and that was wonderful news that, you know, Matt gave a good presentation there. And they supported us fully right away. They were, you know, and it's great to have the support of, of them. And obviously saves our district a lot of burden there, which, which I, you know, I appreciate. We also, we had the Big Fork Steering Committee meeting there, good discussions up there. We followed up with a meeting on the football team there on whether they were going to field or not. You know, had good, good participation by parents there and, and students. It was good to see them there. You know, and they're making a great effort to put a team out on a field there and I'm glad to see that. I know there's some, some more challenges going on there with that, but I'm, I'm really, you know, that's what it's about, is a community getting involved and, and fighting for those things. I mean, numbers are a challenge up there right now. And, and they're, they're doing everything they can to, to keep kids involved. I like to see that. That's all I have.
Thanks, Ashley.
I'm knee deep in teacher negotiations and that's really all I can report on. Actually, one more thing, just as a community event, the library is hosting their annual community library event on Wednesday. I believe it is from one to five. one to five, free popcorn, free Kona ice. And there's just like little interesting, um, stations that, uh, kids of all ages can come in and, uh, check out their arts and crafts. Uh, they can turn in their reading logs and get free books, uh, and just have a really nice time. It's outdoors right next to the library. And so, uh, just to shout that out, but otherwise it's been quiet, which is interesting. Yeah.
Uh, yeah, very briefly, we've started negotiations with ESPs. Uh, and that's, we had one meeting, went very successfully. Um, strong beginning there. Uh, as a board, we, uh, last, uh, at our last meeting, uh, was not able to be here, but we spent some time talking about some of those issues uh, that we, uh, as a school board might want to see our legislature focus on. And I would like to take that list and work with it and maybe we can refine that. We as a board have the responsibility to approve whatever it is that we want to do. We can't just, uh, run it up the flagpole without all of us agreeing on that. Uh, and Endowment Committee is starting to meet. Uh, and we've added Kara as a member for the Endowment Committee. Thank you very much for stepping up. Much appreciated. That's all I have for now.
Good, Dave.
Um, last Tuesday, I attended the Rife Arts Council External Affairs Committee meeting. Where we're, um, working on RFP process for kind of the future of, of a economic feasibility study. Um, approved quite a few check runs. Um, and many thanks to Kara and Diane for all of my questions. Thank you for, um, allowing me to, to ask about those things. Um, I, it's been, I missed the last meeting as well, um, where I assumed some duties in absentia from some people on this table.
Told.
Um, with pride I'll serve on those. Uh, however, um, since then or before then, uh, I actually was able to organize a tour of a local business and, uh, discuss the career pathways program back on July first with Superintendent Gross, Principal Darren Hofstedt and Scott Patro. And I'm meeting with Scott again tomorrow morning to continue that discussion, which was very encouraging and exciting for kind of a path for our community. Um, and then just a, a shout out to the district for a lot of people, I'm sure. But, um, the word from the swim booster club is that it was a pretty positive experience overall for the camp that was able to be held this summer, which was, we needed some help from the district to be able to put that on. And so thank you to the district for, um, getting the pool, some water again, so we could do that. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Gross.
I've, uh, I've been involved in, uh, negotiations also this summer. So it seems like most of our units are up and going on, on that, uh, Superintendent Gross, do we have a superintendent's report?
Yeah, it's interesting. Uh, I often get asked about schools shutting down in the summer and, you know, it, nothing could be further from the truth. Uh, you can see on the agenda, lots of hiring, uh, our business offices probably neck deep in audit. Um, so that's all happening now. We have sports and activities starting. A number of sports started today. Uh, a number of you mentioned negotiations happening. We've met with principals a couple of times in the last two weeks. Strategy team twice in the last few weeks, uh, training going on. This room's booked, I think, just about every day from now until school. So, uh, that's exciting. And also I think, I guess, just good to have a space that we can use that works really well. Um, Wednesday, we'll be bringing the leadership teams from all the buildings together in the room here. It's one of my favorite kind of days is to see a group of people that are just really invested in special ways in the schools. So, uh, grateful for that. Looking forward to it. Um, want to mention the mascot too. That was, it seems like a long time ago now, but, uh, it was since our last meeting, Tom mentioned it. Um, and I think it just, I'm proud of the way our district navigated that. I think we, you know, took a respectful, responsible approach. We handled ourselves with integrity. I know that, that many of us probably saw cries to take a more aggressive, belligerent, angry, frustrated approach. And I think we proved that, um, dialogue still matters, relationships still matters. Um, being curious still matters. And so I'm really proud of the approach we took and I'm really grateful for the outcome and, and for our partners at Leech Lake as well for supporting our community and for really reinforcing what our, uh, American Indian Parent Advisory Committee, you know, what their wishes were as well. Uh, we mentioned during the academic portion a bit earlier that MCAs will be out embargoed first and there's an opportunity for corrections. And then they get released publicly right around state fairtime, uh, every year. Um, and then good news last week, can I say this about the GRIP, the GRIP grant? Never mind. We have some good news coming about a grant, um, grant renewal. So.
Okay. It's all right.
That's it.
It's good to be enthusiastic about those things. Um, a reminder, upcoming school board committee meeting dates are posted on each agenda. School board meeting agendas can be found in the district website and at the designated posting site to the three eighteen ed services building. Is there any other business to come before the board? Hearing none, Julie, has anyone signed up for public input?
No, no one has signed up.
Meeting's adjourned.
Thank you, Mark. Yeah.
Kind of interesting, Brian. Called me this morning, you know.
Said, uh, her, her group is kind of interesting.
Nice.
聚集 together.